Call the meeting to order, it's eighteen thirty. Black and Luke. Okay, roll call. Mister Turner.
Present.
Mister Langer.
Present.
Miss Hawks.
Present.
France, not here, I'm here, Doctor Bethman. Okay. Alright. Uh, no addition and.
Nope.
No. Um. Uh, public comment, items that are on the agenda. Nope.
Okay, we have a hand raise?
I don't know what all the items on the agenda are, but Ed said there might be something that is relevant to me, could I make a comment?
Um, if you wanna sign in real quick.
Know what the protocol is. I just wanted to do a shout out to Ed Dowell on behalf of all the Eagle Scouts that he's assisted doing the projects on the high school premises. My husband had hoped to say something more, I don't know, nicer than I am, but he's not here, so I thought since we're here, this is a good opportunity to give a shout out. He's been very supportive through three Eagle Scout projects my kids have done at the high school and gone out of his way to help us. Um, with staging things in advance, spaces for us, and being responsive to their communications. So he's gone above and beyond, we have other Eagle Scouts that have had more difficulties with facilities getting projects done. And he's been very supportive and um, it's an asset to the community to be able to put these things together with systems. Just wanted to do that on behalf of my family to add before everybody.
We agree, and it's Mister Wonderful. If it wasn't for him, we'd be in a lot of trouble on a weekly basis.
Okay, recognition. College Board Big Future Award.
Yes, so we have three students here that are gonna be recognized and Mister Theonis is here to recognize them. Um, we are really honored to have them here so the board can recognize them and hear about just a little bit of their accomplishments and how they deserve this recognition.
Hello, good evening, nice to be here, not having to do a report. So uh, the order up there is Grace Morgan and Gunner Morgan and Yana Midor. So these guys performed very well on the PSAT and I heard Yana talking about scoring real high on the AP Biology test, which. I never had the guts to even try, so my hat's off to you. These guys obviously are very high academic flyers for us as students and they do a great job representing our school and our community and. Um, when we got this notification was, I immediately asked my boss, can we recognize these guys? Cause it's not too often, you know, they put in a lot of long hours, working hard and studying. And they do a lot of stuff behind the scenes and and it's very rare that they get recognized, so um, this is a great opportunity and so. Um, first, um, destination is Grace Morgan for rural performance in the College Big Board, College Board. Big Future Award, come on up Grace, so stay up here and then um, we're gonna get a picture with you and the board. Congratulations. Then Gunner Morgan. Probably has been out running how many miles today?
Not too many, even four weeks.
Alright, taking it easy, and then Yana Midor, come on up. Congratulations all you guys. Then where do you want them at?
We're gonna stand right in front of the flag.
We'll get right in front of the flag, okay.
Can I get one of this uh, Gunner for my cross-country?
Sure.
Double D, you don't need to be a.
You're all. I wanted to get over.
Yes.
And then the board wants to take a picture with you over here by the flags, guys.
All the board can join or we'll just have her president, whatever you'd like.
I have a question, did they explore real high in their exams?
No, I was gonna, while they're getting their picture, I thought I'd tell you a little bit more.
Yeah, well, it was quick and fast. Good luck. Is that like?
We're gonna do it right again to flag. And is there room for everybody? Cause if there is, we could have the whole board with them. What if we do, here I'm gonna organize real quick, what if we do two? Yeah, Grace, right here, make more room, Yana right here, got that, there we go. Okay, one, two, three. So as we're sitting back down, um, I'll explain just a little bit more of what I dug into this award. Uh, this is actually one of the first years that College Board is doing the Big Future Award, or it's maybe the second. Uh, but it's a relatively new award and they look for students who are, they consider underrepresented. So students from a rural background, or students who are Hispanic, or students who are black, or students who um, uh, are low income. Um, oh, there were some other big areas, uh, but they, they're looking for under, unrepresented students who perform well. And I believe it was either on your PSAT or an AP test that you took. So, and when it says, um, performed well, you performed better than most of the students. And especially students who were um, in the same student group as they were looking at when they identified students. From what I can tell, these students are selected and then they don't say, you know, Grace, you will have a scholarship, but they put them in a pool. And every month, they will be pulling names out of the, the pool and they could receive a scholarship from four hundred dollars up to forty thousand dollars.
Go for that one.
Yeah. So College Board's a, a big um, program, they, they basically run the AP and the SAT and the PSAT. Um, and colleges, when you're applying for colleges, look for recognition like this on, on uh, resumes and on letters of recommendations and things. So this is a really good honor to be recognized by College Board because these are students across the country who are gonna wanna be going to college. And we have three of the kids who've been recognized, so congratulations you guys, we're proud of you and we look forward to see what's going on next. Yeah, and, uh, yeah. Yes, Yana, right? Okay, uh, Yana took the AP Biology test and, and earned a three, which is a passing score on the Biology test, and that is a really tough AP test. Um, that and physics are two of the very difficult ones, so congratulations on, on getting a three on AP Bio, that's. Are you taking any AP classes this year?
Um, I am in a couple of EWE classes.
There you go.
So I'm taking Political Science and I'm in um, Statistics.
Oh, great, okay, good, so you're gonna be getting college credit that way, nice job, how about Gunner?
Uh, test or classes, what are you asking?
Both, little bit, how about, how about classes, did you take any AP tests last year?
We're running start students.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you're right, that's right, I knew that, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So how are your classes going this year? So you're getting a full load of college credits, right?
I think so, yeah. Um, uh, straight A's for whatever that's worth.
A lot?
I enjoy them, you know.
What are you taking this quarter?
Uh, this stupid quarter, I'm taking uh, Statistics, Nutrition Science, and Public Speaking. Uh, next quarter, I'm taking Calculus and Political Science and um, Biology for the lab. Um, I have, and then I have the next spring quarter probably planned out too.
Fabulous.
Biblical, religion, anthropology, intuitive philosophy, and. Something else.
Oh, just a simple one like that, huh? Well, congratulations you guys, we are really impressed and proud to say that you are from Rochester. Thank you for being here, if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are more than welcome. But I do want to let you know, maybe you wanna wait till after your student reps give their reports and then you can duck out or. But you do not have to stay for the entire meeting, you don't even have to stay another second longer if you want, I understand if you have things to do, so.
Uh, they do most of it in the classwork. I don't know if they have them do like action, so.
I don't know how that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. For pub, your public speaking class, do you have to go out and give a public speech anywhere?
Uh, not outside of the class itself, but it is optional, be in the speech club and eventually that will uh, uh, sustain us to give these speeches.
The president has tried to say, if you wanna come here?
You think he can come up here and give a?
I appreciate the offer, that's very kind.
We'll get with Mister Theonis and we'll set up a time and, and subject for you to come and speak to us about.
Do please, do.
Too easy, huh?
I'll give my next board report meeting.
Sure, have him prepared for questions.
About the sip and everything.
Okay, alright. Okay, uh, so our next one is the Bob Harmon Service to Education.
Alright, and so for this one, I would like to invite Maggie Evans up here. And as you can see, Maggie has been identified for the twenty twenty-five Bar, Bob Harmon Service to Education Award. And this is a national award, so one person here is recognized for the Bob Harmon Service to Education Award. And I am just absolutely so pleased to say it's Maggie, and I tell you, they picked the right person. Um, when I read to you what the meaning of the award is, I think you're gonna then start to put the pieces together. But before I even do this, I wanna say that Maggie was um, nominated by somebody from OSPI. So it was somebody who saw the work that she was doing from afar and said, we need to recognize her. So she's not only making a difference here, but she's making a difference across the state and just with her continual input. Which is what brought to this nomination, which was then actually being identified for the award. But the foundation of, or the, the purpose of the award says, um, that is to go to somebody who um. Uh, I don't know if I can read my own writing, made a substantial contribution towards advancing the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Uh, purpose to provide all children with significant opportunities to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education to close educational achievement gaps. And I gotta tell you, that's what this woman does, day in and day out, and she holds us all accountable to it. And especially the part when it says, um, all children. So it's not, you know, not just our kids who have all the supports at home. But our low-income students, which is a lot of the Title One work, which is where this award comes from, is Title One. Um, but it's also, uh, she's now working with Title Six, which is the Indian, um, or Native American students. And she's starting a program there, she works with the ML students, which is another Title Three service that she provides supports for. Um, along with that, she's started the dual-language program, she works with our McKenney Vento students. She works with um, our highly capable students, right, another side of students. Uh, just, she does so much for all of our kids and she's a huge advocate for them, making sure that we have the programs in place. So that all of our kids are successful, making sure that she, that the supports to support maybe some of the gaps that they have. Are in place, because everybody doesn't come to us ready to go, right, some need a little bit extra support. And she finds a way to give the support to the kids, um, that they're, that are, that need us and they need extra support. You know, when we look at a student who's not quite reading, right? How do we, are we gonna support those kiddos who are Tier Three? We've been talking a lot about our Tier Three, and a lot of those are our Title One students that need some of the additional supports. She's there, she makes it happen, and she's always thinking out of the box. So we're looking at things in different ways, which I think is why OSPI recognizes her. Because it's not just the, okay, tell me what to do and I'll do it. She's one that's thinking, okay, we could do this and we could do it like this and it'll work a little better, and then other people are learning from her. So just um, wonderful work that she's doing, uh, let me see if I had anything else, I think the other Rise Center. Is something that she has put into place, which is supports for the families in our area again, where there's an additional need. And the Rise Center is huge, sees a ton of kids, and Maggie doesn't do like daily work there, but she oversees. Our amazing ladies that are in the Rise Center and make sure that they have the supports and resources that they need to be successful. Um, I think the other thing that she does do that goes hand in hand with the title work is the LAP program. Which is our state funds that work with a lot of our students who come to us with sufficient needs, but. They picked the right person when they selected Maggie, she'll be going to the National Conference in February, all expenses paid. Um, and they're gonna officially recognize her there in front of thousands of people who go to this conference and um. But I'm telling you, they, they really did choose the right person when they selected Maggie, so Maggie, congratulations.
Thank you, yes.
Look back there and wave.
Oh.
Say thanks, mom.
My mother and my sister. Oh, very cool. Um, we do wanna get a picture.
Okay.
So we'll do it over in front of the flag again, and we definitely want it with our president to express the work, you know how to do it. Already lined up, Wes.
You know where to stand.
Yes, you are. Was thinking about this before.
Just hold your breath.
There we go.
There we go.
Can we please give Maggie a huge round of applause? Congratulations Maggie.
Okay, I think we should have some paint or something.
We always should have, you're right.
We're having all this celebration tonight, this is wonderful. I would've known, I would've.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Gotta get a second. Could I get, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No opposed, so the motion has passed. Yes. Hey. Wow, wow, wow. Going first.
Alright, so the first thing on our report is soccer. We are really appreciative that last meeting, you asked the motion to let middle-schoolish play up. They've been playing on our JV team, making connections for, with the players that they're gonna be playing with next year, so they're having a lot of fun, they're. Doing really good on our JV. We won our second game versus Hoquiam five-zero on October tenth. The varsity in JV played very well against our match yesterday versus Montesano, we played a hundred percent throughout the whole game, even if the score didn't reflect it. I'm very proud of, proud of our players. Um, Mister Eric said that these gals continue to make their presence known on the field and are currently sitting in fourth place in our league. The, they play again on Thursday versus Tenino, which is also our senior night. And if we finish in fourth place, they will play against a fifth-place team of the TriCo South. Where the eighth spot in the district bracket. However, if we beat Tenino and Hoquiam, then we'll be in third going to the playoffs. So for our senior night tomorrow, for uh, it's at seven PM, it's versus Tenino again. Our seniors that we're recognizing are Piper Cornstrom, Taylor Staley, Mariana Al, Alvarez, Estella. Kylie Sessina, Alondra Yurav, and Gila Black.
Our um, football team, uh, the, the last, last Friday beat Montesano for the first time in twenty years. And uh, we played Tenino this Friday, and with one against them, that'll be our first uh, district title since the nineteen hundreds. Nineteen ninety-nine. And that's also our senior night. Or no, no, that's not our senior, that's their senior night, and then next, the Friday after that is ours against Hoquiam. And our seniors are Cole Smith, Carson Roder, Lucas McIntyre, Quinn Clevenger, Nicholas Mendiola, Conley Dawn, Bertie Common. Ivan Castillo and me. And the golf team. And Boden Grims leading the average low, followed by Cash, Gavin, Gavin Revel, Kevin Duffett, and Wesley Dahl. And they all, they all got into districts and played yesterday at the day one, District Four, One A Golf Districts. They, they didn't quite color, qualify for day two, but their spirits are high and they look forward to working together to get better between now and next year. None of those kids are senior, but they're better.
Uh, for volleyball, they're working hard as individuals and as a team to improve and compete. They've had some near misses in games, pushing sets to neck and neck, maximum, and just missing the one. They play this Thursday versus Tenino, which is also their senior night and their last league contest at seven PM. They have eleven seniors this year, which are Arisela Barron, McKenna Vassar, Leah Hartley, Cheyenne Justice, Avalena some, some. Sam Velay, Sam Velay, thank you. Uh, Paxton White, Haley Boyd, Kylie Gailey, Katie Thompson, Sienna Harold, and Taki Cruz. For swimming? Okay, for swimming, our sixteen years, last two outings will be on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth of October. At our home pool, Lorbeck's in Centralia, and Wednesday at the thirtieth at the Grace Harbor by MCA in Aberdeen. The swim team has only lost a single dual meet all year and beat Aberdeen again yesterday. Casey Smith and Grace Morgan have earned automatic qualifying times for districts and will compete on the. On November eighth and the ninth, representing RHS. Coach Brim, Brimman uh, notes that they are tremendous, that they are tremendous team captains. Mulling the Venus from the program at the conclusion of their season. They had their senior night. Uh, and celebrated Grace Morgan and Casey Smith, theirs is next week, that Tuesday.
So the Fall True Team recently attended the, the U-Dub Spirit Day at the University of Washington last Saturday, had a great time. The seniors from, from Chira, Lily Hernandez, Paige Lawton, Karen Rivera, Ally Green, Fabia, Fabiola Gomez. Um, Mister Eric says that they're all troopers and bring great spirit in all they do. They provide exceptional energy all year, especially in our win over Montesano last Friday. They all have unreal, they have all battled the elements and keep on going. They truly provide spark in those moments where it can be hard to find.
And for cross-country, uh, and the men's, they have a better-than-average chance at league title, which hasn't been accomplished since two thousand and thirteen. The cross-country has league championships tomorrow at Oak Ridge Golf Course in Oma at five PM. They also have districts next week on October thirty-first with eleven runners. Gunner Morgan, uh, Hunter Young, Katie Evanstar, Keon Christensen, Loading Cooms, Brandon Fontas, Zach Hubbard. Bruce Phillips, Jackson Reese, Mercedes Dupont, and Sarah Eldridge.
The, the FFA Club had the state officers come and talk to, to, to their agriculture class and do some leadership workshops. They had a trip to the pumpkin patch this last Wednesday, where they went out in the good, good rich pumpkin patch. Came back, carved pumpkins, we'll have snacks and watching some Halloween movies.
For drama, they're having rehearsals every day after school for the play Calder Becca, and it's on November twenty-second and twenty-third.
Skills USA is preparing for their regionals anytime that they can. They're also getting, getting the fundraiser plan for the trips to state and nationals, such as an Applebee's fundraiser and the wheel, wheel spinning fundraiser.
Uh, FBLA is fundraising by doing concessions at football games and also making banners for the sports teams and their senior athletes.
Trap, uh, trap shooting, and next Wednesday, Mister Jeski is starting, is hosting the parent athlete meeting for trap shooting. So they haven't really got to start anything yet, but they will soon. For band, four, four of the students at the high school are, were selected to participate in the PLU Honor Band. Where students from all around the country get selected. And uh, Carson Moses, Jeremiah Jenkins, they're both seniors, and Hannah Johnson and Violet Wolf are both junior. That's, that's all we got.
Excellent.
Questions?
Excellent. Question?
Lot's of stuff going on.
Y'all don't wanna hang out here with us, people from the nineteen nine. You can leave.
Have a good evening, you guys, thanks you.
Hey, Prince has a song by this. Okay. You're up, you're the only one.
Do you have a card or a plan? Alright, we're starting with heart, but before I start talking, I wanna, I know some of you have seen our yearbook, but it's in my presentation, so there's two years of the yearbook. It's um, you'll see where that comes in play if you can look at what we got going on there, but so. Every year I gotta present my heart report and my CT report, so with the heart report, I have a new teacher this year uh, from the middle school. Uh, Marissa Dozier has joined us, Ms. Thaden is retired from teaching, so we have a new teacher in Ms. Dozier, and she's fitting in exactly what we need at heart, so she's been a good fit. You know, it was a, a nice addition to heart. Um, this year, last year we started without Charlie, and now this year she has been with us for the whole year, and it's really nice to have that EA support. It's our interventions. So celebrations, I want us to always start, like start with celebrations, so. Starting the school year with thirty-two students, and you'll, I have a slide coming pretty soon, I'll kinda give the breakdown of the last seven years of where we started. So I'm happy with starting with thirty-two, um, and then I wanted to highlight, we have, we have three students enrolled in Running Start. And it's just, uh, that tells me so much about the population I have, I have students that really want the college end of it, even though they're going to heart, they wanna. Get the college credits, and I have three of them this year, so I'm really happy with it. Um, the Fall Connection Conference is for, heart is huge. I have intake with every student, every parent before the school year, so it's really, they're not really reapplying to go to heart, it's an intake meeting. So that, that time that's freed up before the school year really benefits heart in connecting with family. And they get to know the new rules and we all sit down and we, we go run together, so you'll see in my, in my school improvement plan, there's a couple things that I'll address on that. So, um, student attendance is trending up, I mean, I know that we're not uh, that far into the school year, but I'm looking at that daily. And we're doing a percentage each day where we're at with students attending, so it's one of my school improvement plan areas is student attendance. So it is trending up, not a ton, but it's trending up. And in the yearbook that I pass around, we actually have officially one club, and that is the Yearbook Club. So students have to stay between the two sessions to be part of the club, and we only do it every two weeks, and it ramps, you know, February, we start meeting a little bit more, but they have to stay. So if you're afternoon stay, you come before your session to help out with the yearbook. And Charlie is playing a big role in it this year for me, and so we're, we're, obviously we're rolling for new this year's yearbook, so those are the last two years. So that is one of the clubs, but I have another club that I wanna start there that we'll get to, so. There is our head count and FT for this year, so you'll see, we have two months reported already. So you'll see how many uh, freshmen, zero, or um, sophomores, you know, twelve juniors and sixteen seniors. It's a good senior class, so you can see we have, we're off and running at a good number, and that, you know, I see, and that other slide said we started with thirty-two, we've already went up to this, you know, for October, so. Next slide talks about overtime, I really thought it was important to show kind of time, you, you can go back to the eighteen, nineteen school year, you can see we had twenty-five students start the year, then we're. Twelve, then the twenty, then eight, then, you know, I was able to, you guys let me go over to heart, which I still appreciate a lot, and we went from twenty-nine, twenty-eight, now thirty-two. So trending in the right direction, it's not too big, it's a good number of students, so I'm happy with the trend where we're going with the head count and FT for heart. Trending in the right direction, it's not too big, it's a good number of students, so I'm happy with the trend where we're going with the head count and F T for heart. Every year I, you know, you'll hear that's in the C T report too, I I have to live my life by goals, I have to set goals, I because I like to. Have something I can achieve and I can have the school achieve, so. Through our school improvement process, we really look at, I want students to belong at heart, I really want them to feel they're part of it, that's one reason we do the yearbook, because we have. That's our school, we have pictures of them, oh, do we have athletics in it? No, we don't have athletics, do we have a lot of clubs? No, but we have a little bit and we do a lot of things around different celebrations, so. That is all about relationships, so we're we're in developing relationships because I wanted to fill this warm place where we can go and have our education. So that's why it's huge on that one bullet, or not really bullet, but that one statement, the graduations at heart, for those who have attended. You know, Ed's done a great job working all day, Jennifer came out with her husband, we just set up a tent because. We set up a big tent the day of graduation, it was an all day thing, it felt like, it really wasn't, but it was. Next year will be easier because when we tore it down, it'll be a little easier to put it back together, but. That's just another connection because that's their school, they go to heart, so we want to graduate out. The yearbook is another relationship building thing that we do on sense of belonging is. Getting their picture in there and getting involved, so you'll see clubs, you you say, I have the yearbook club and I'm really. We're close to having our first STEM club, we really, what we're looking at there is. Actually, in two more weeks, we're on a Friday, some kids are coming in and we're gonna do different activities. Our first one, we're very set, we're gonna build a couple of the air water rockets and we're gonna. Go outside and work with those, we were talking about, you know, they do the aid drop, they do these different things, I'm just trying to find a different way to connect with. All kids at the heart, we have some kids are really into the gears and they really are into motors and they're into different things, but they can see those. Two liter water bottles shooting up in the air and then. Do the work before on building it and guessing where it's gonna go, we have. We're just gonna do different activities throughout the year, just once a month, we're gonna start a little small, but we want to get this going. And I want more kids to attend on Friday, they don't have to right now, but I in building this relationship with them belonging to the school. They come to school early, I have kids in my office at seven, ten in the morning, I'm trying to get my board report done tonight and. But no, it's awesome, they love coming to school, so we're we're there and we're building relationships out. About my goals, but now. I get to do a school improvement and today I was with Maggie on a Zoom and. And I was telling them in the meeting. School improvement goals for me are great because a lot of things have can have developed have. Just we've figured things out at heart, but it's really nice because we get to report those things and we have someone overlooking them and I can bounce ideas and. You know, I gotta thank Maggie for everything she does to support her because not only rise, but she. Helps with so many things with heart, so I appreciate her, she thinks she does there for that, but so goal one. Now increase it, so. Before I started at heart, we started doing a survey. On how about her, how they like it and all this, and I've changed the name a little bit to more belonging. But I'm still trying to use the questions I used three years ago because I over time I want to see how that changes, I don't think it's. Data, I try to get the cleanest data, I I know it's new kids, but I want to see if the. Data stays the same, so when it says we'll increase in each category, so we have. Different belonging questions and the scale's really small, it's a zero to four scale, but so we're looking to move up one. Scale on that, so we want to be, we're getting the proficient, we want to be extinguished, but we're. We're working on moving up one scale, so that's why it says one increase one categories award up there, but we're doing that by our monthly celebration, so we celebrate. Attendance on track. Um completion of classes and then we end up doing that with trivia games. Having students there, this we have Pollock, teachers will bring different things in, it's making it. At the very end of their um class day, they have a celebration in the P M class, they get it to begin, so. So that's a couple of activities, but I think the clubs will also uh have the sense of belonging and engagement at schools. That's um number one, I'll give questions at the end, I know I'm going kind of through a lot of things I need to get through. Now, this one's written kind of weird, but when you really look at it, I I we wanted a goal that we could dial into our. Chronic absence students, so that's where the ten percent, that's defining that, so now, once we. You can find out, which I look at daily, my percentages, now I can go look at trying to improve that. Uh daily attendance and so the chronic absences over time will hopefully be cut by the ten percent is my goal. Last year I did meet the goal, but this year we've put some new things in, we have our uh social emotional um lessons, we're doing attendance and sentence that are we talked about with our. Celebrations, some home visits, trying to find those students, why they're not coming, what barriers they have and then tiered intervention. Plans that I go over with them every twenty days if they're probably. Goal three. So writing a goal, you know, we'd love to write a goal that says that all kids will be on track all the time, so we wrote a goal around. Being on track now that you're at heart, so we're measuring it by a six credit day, so. We want you, now you're a Harston, we're gonna track that as being on track as. A heart student, because sometimes the students come and they don't have, they're behind already, so that. If we wrote a goal around about having every student on track, we'd never get to on someone because they come behind, so this one is dealing with heart students. And and we're basing that on six credits if they're passing. So we do that, different things, the one on one conferences, the check on the progress, the daily support to their academic work. So how that works, those this examples of that through the school improvement process a year ago. We came up with a daily goal sheet, so I ask every student, they stop by and they get a daily goal sheet that they fill out. It's real simple, I could have put a a link on there and then, but it's really their name, the day, the time in and time out. What your goals are for a day and did you accomplish those goals and then on Friday, the teachers look at every one of those, we give feedback on Monday, they get a copy, you know, it's the word. Copy because we keep on because those come in handy and some of those conversations I have to have, I can pull out. The here's, well Johnny is here at this time, leaves at this time, so let's talk about that, so so it is. Uh a very simple thing that came through, just the way we're trying to set goals for students and we're still using it this year and. Every, you know, you have to remind them, they know the routine, they they go to desk, they get it, they sit down, they write it. And the second phase of that, I don't want to get too deep, I know my time is, but uh. Is now with teachers coming and going, because I start my day there, then the math teacher, English teacher, they come. Now they can look at the piece of paper and see what Johnny's working. Instead of interrupting them, they might have here fun phones on because of the new um program we have, there's videos, so. We it's just a quick check and another check and connect, then when I come back, I can look at it, look over their shoulder without interrupting them. Seeing where they're at and if they're reaching their daily goal, so we we get it right down to daily goal, so that's how we do for the goal three and what. Then I just some students in action, you'll see a couple of them, but. In the yearbook, but the two on the sides are just students, so first day of school, that's why they have the uh finger up, say number one, first day of school, they're there and it was. It's a bunch uh own a bunch of kids, so any questions about heart report?
Do they go on half a day each?
Yes, so three hours and there there's a A M session, three hours and a P M session, it that goes through.
Do you serve lunch then?
Yep, and breakfast, hot breakfast and hot.
And is there an expectation that they do work outside of?
Yes, and there's two hour, the contract they sign is a two hours every day that they have to spend doing homework, so they should be. Their goal is twenty eight hours in a week. And this new program that we have does a great job of of. Track in idle time and how much time you're actually taking a quiz, how much you're reading, I mean, it breaks it down, it makes my um some of my conversations very easy with.
So can they stay in there the whole day if they want to?
Yes, right now we are, we have some, I have a student that does it right now because he doesn't have internet at home and he's that. Focus, sometimes if you ever come over, he I'll give him a longer break sometimes, since he starts at seven fifteen, he'll sit outside the. Boys and Girls Club and just take a little extra break, so he but he, yes, we.
Yes, couple of questions I hope I haven't asked you in the past, but it came to me, one is um these students uh. Pay like their student body fees and stuff like all students do.
They can pay, yes.
I see that you talk about the belonging and the uh school and art. And some of the rewards are like the Rochester mugs and stuff with the R on it and stuff like that, do they have, do you have?
Well, we made our art mugs and. Yeah, we have our own T shirts, our own logos that we created.
Yeah, that's that's what, okay, thanks.
We'll have to see one of the graduations.
Oh, yeah, those graduations are amazing. I seen the three students who are enrolled in running start, are they afternoon students or are they morning students that are?
Actually, two in the morning, one in the afternoon.
That's how does that work? Do they come partly to you then during the start?
And some of them are doing this to. The again, some students come a little behind in credit, they're making up credits as they go, so. We have some credits.
Do they actually trying to get ahead of where their school?
Um yeah, is that true, one student's interest is is something the college offers that I can offer and really wanted to. Go down that industry, so he's going to running start.
Nice, very good, very cool. Like it.
Right, you hit me again, so let's switch here. Ground myself, C T.
By the way, just your energy and your enthusiasm for the work out there.
I know, it's fun work and I'm blessed because now I get to talk about C T and I wish I could talk about athletic, but that's all right there. I have another hat, I have another slap right now, but. All right, so tonight, actually, I started my evening, well, I started, you know, I had a company, a meeting with Maggie, but then I had my. Advisory meeting tonight at the high school, I started at five and we they're probably finishing up now, so. You know, twice a year we have advisory where each C T department brings in industry people and they we go over different. Um things about each program and they meet with their teachers and they. Go over different district standards, but that's going on tonight, but I just want to put a slide together that. You know, C T off provides a ton of things to our students, you know, I'm always looking for. Career opportunities, ways to explore. Different careers are out there, uh two years ago, uh we bought a program called U Science and does a great job of. Doing industry standards for us, but also a lot of career guidance around there and since I bought it at the high school, I asked Maggie and she bought it. At Heartforce, so I guess I'm back and jumping back to heart, but I use that at heart for for so students can. Explore different careers and we we do it, you know, we do it at both schools and so it's a great program that. Can give industry standards there also, so. Another thing it provides, you'll see coming up, but dual credit opportunities. It connects students with uh good paying entry level jobs is our goals and then. Um this real world, working in the real world and the teachers teaching in a way that it's. About industry and this is what industry standards are and that's what tonight's meeting about is to get in. Industry people there to give feedback to our teachers, to make sure that we're not missing anything, that's new out there in industry. Um employability skills, we're always working with that in every class we have because as we as. Kids need those skills when they get out in the work. And then develop leadership skills, there's a C T S O that I'll talk about, which is their. Uh student organizations that will be coming up, but that's where the leadership skills come in and it. Provides a pathway to apprenticeships, industry certifications, two year and four year options through C T. So the next one, just like heart, you know, I need to set goals for myself where I wanted this program, where I wanted to see this program go. Three years ago when I took it over, but I really, there's a lot there and. I'm working on all of them, just like any goal, we're always trying to tweak it, so. You know, explore opportunities, I want kids to explore and I'm not, some of these are on the first slides, I don't. Want to uh repeat myself too much, but the industry certification through U Science, we're getting some certifications, you know. Um OSHA ten, every student's in shop classes getting that, so that when they go out in the. Real world, they have the first step of their OSHA part are taken care of through school is one example. Uh to their food handlers, a card to different things that they. In high schools, so they're ready for a job, you know, link to post secondary education and try to find those. Um good entry level jobs for them, so that ties back into our U Science that we're using. And obviously, we want them to be good employees, so employability skills with the job related skills, so. We always around industry, want industry student and partnering with the industry, so we know what's happening. You know, so then I talk up and you'll see some slides coming up, but participate in the touring technical student organizations, you'll. Hear that a lot referred to as C T S Os and that's. The slides will explain, I won't go into now, but I'll go on that, then participate in skills competitions, community service. Uh every C T S O last year participated at state, they went to state, obviously, you know, we have, you know. Um on from state, we had some nationals, we have second place, you know, with our drones and our search records to you, but every. C T S O participated in state, which is their first for Rochester, I believe, I mean, it's been a long time, Justin could correct me, but. So and then become leaders, participating, that's the biggest thing out of that I really wanted to do and then. Rigorous program of study, I want it to be rigorous, I want to challenge the students, so each person's be a challenger, so. If we went back to, you know, when I talk about goals, so if we. If we go back just two years in time, I think we had one class with agreement with the college to get credit. With the help of Justin and my teachers, we were able to get twenty four credits now, just going to our high school. Getting a dual credit with the college on the side there and how many credits now they can get by just taking our internal medical careers class. They can get a five credit. From Centralia College for that. Same with the animal bio, now we wouldn't reach out to all the wall and that's where we pulled that, so they're gonna give us. So on a transcript, it will show a five credit from that different college. So I'm not done expanding that, I mean, we have a list on Justin's wall, we're still hammering it, the amount of. But we're gonna keep working it, we're gonna grow that even more. All right, so then I wanted to throw out some F Ts, we talked about F Ts because that's a huge thing, because that's where we get our money. Everybody talks about money, but I want to show you over time in the three years. So that's not ninety seven students in that are doing it, that's six. To get that number, that's six periods a day, students are taken to equal one full time student, you have to be in six classes, so we. We're claiming a hundred thirty eight F Ts this year of C T.
Eight hundred and thirty seven students, we only have six hundred and twenty in the high school, so we have students taking more than one C T E course currently.
So you'll see where that number's grown and it's by the work of business marketing, we're doing some things around there, we can expand there, we have. Different things we can do, so we're gonna grow, I'm not, I mean, I'm not done at that number, I'm just wanting to show you over time where we're. And that's, so that's a lot of students taking a C T class. So I kind of talked about C T S Os earlier, but uh that's where you'll hear those words around Skills USA, the. F F A organization, F B L A and. The sports medicine one, so all those have went, we went to state last year and competed at state. So that F B L A was the first time ever, you know, they've done, well, not, I can't say ever, because in a short period of time. So anyway, those are different student organizations that you'll hear me talk about throughout the presentation, so. And in the different classes, so let's see the next one and I, you know, different programs over under Ag, those are different classes we offer. And then. The next slide will show some kids working, so Ag Chemistry Class. And F F A officers working at different things, I think that's, they get talked about the pumpkin patch, but there's their picture of them at the pumpkin patch. Showing a chicken and a duck down there at the fair, different things that they're involved with, so that's um. That chemistry class and using the C T S O of F F A. And then some students working in the shop, so um. Michael tonight with the group that we had in there, he did a demonstration of a new C N C machine, again. It seems like, please email Dr. Bethan or myself, let's, I'd love to get you guys in there, get a walkthrough, let's see the good things we're doing now. See the business marketing, same all, I'd love this. Somehow get, I'll get you a tour, I love to see the that C N C machine's awesome tonight, he. Pre-programmed a few things and they cut it right there on the spot for the visitors that were there, they got to see it in action, so. So then next one, then Mr. Jasky does those different things through Skills USA. So it's just not one org, it's one organization that has lots of different competitions, it's welding, weld fab, his art sculpture piece of welding and then his power equipment technology. He really, the reason cabinet making's on the bottom, he's really exploring that one this year. He has a volunteer that has been in the woodshop for three to four years now and he's a great one, he's a loved one. And just, he volunteers every day and he, he has that skill set to help those kids and those um just thinking just putting a birdhouse together, we're going to do some cabinet making, so he's an asset. So then health sciences, you know, you'll, on that one slide earlier on, that health is a new thing that we have dual credit just this year with Centralia College. It's just, it's, ink is still wet, we just signed the agreement, so that is a, a great opportunity for kids to get a credit through Centralia. Then intro to medical careers, which is done last year, dual credit with um with Centralia College. And then obviously, we have sports medicine and, and next year, we're looking to get advanced.
I gotta, I gotta say something on this, this slide, so we need to understand about that health credit. Every freshman that gets an Airbnb in health will get three credits at Centralia. Every freshman that gets an Airbnb in health class will get three credits at Centralia.
Start other high school.
Thank, thanks to Kevin for working, working the articulation agreements. So we get to start their college. Collection of college credits and maybe work on trying to hold, because that's part of Kevin's goal, is right? Let's see how many credits we can get kids and keep kids here, not send them down to running start, but keep kids here, right? And so we're starting that as, as a freshman and that was a big, big get, um so.
Yeah, we have some more to get.
So.
Alright, and then she, she put some pictures in of kids working, she wanted to make sure we see kids working on athletes. Next slide would be ASL, you know, we're thrilled to announce we have a new teacher, uh Dean Roberts. He uh, he comes to us with a huge background in, in signing, he was in a local college for a number of years and just fell on our lap. He was available to come teach our Rochester, so really happy to have him, he has a passion for teaching, dedication of ASL. It's uh, there are, in it, when they walk in the door, because he is totally deaf, so it's all signed, everything's, it's game on. And it's, you can see the growth, though, if you go in there and see the kids have to sign and it is awesome, the growth that we're seeing. This is Ed, um those are courses that are available, obviously, um we have a new program there, we're working through. Really looking at trying to start a student store, I think it might be on the slide coming up, so I might be jumping ahead of myself. But the new teacher is looking at a student store, that'd be ran during lunchtime, so um students have an opportunity, they're working on their business plan now. This is a slow rule, we're looking for second semester to do this, because we're trying to do it right, instead of just telling the kids what to do, we're trying to have the kids tell us how to run it. So they're making a business plan and developing it as we go, but I might have jumped a little bit ahead, because it's on another slide, but I mean, excellent. But inner class, she's taking advantage of the machines that we have purchased over time and she did the warrior pride card that you'll see at the high school there, she did that in-house. Um, she's doing science for concession, she um, and I'm, she has lots of people helping her and we are trying to not overwhelm her with things too, because she is a yes person, she is going, she will do it for us. But we're, I'm making sure that she does enough to, to do everything that is put on her plate. So, and then fundraising, she is trying to fundraise like crazy. You'll see on November first, she's taken twenty-three students to Grace Harbor for the Fall FBLA um Leadership Conference, which I think that's brand new for Rochester to take kids to, so that's not state yet, but I know she'll be doing state in the spring, but she, we have to start somewhere. So she is building a program as we go, uh participating in, you know, they, but really doing the fundraising. Our first bullet she put on there, she's fundraising a lot, because she needs to, to pull this off, the store and everything, she needs to support. Kids talked about the banners, you can see students working on the banners there, right there in that picture. And um, and she's very knowledgeable of the rolling machine that you guys approved a couple of years ago, it was very expensive, so we're getting good use of it. She knows it, I actually just sent her yesterday to Hanson where we bought the rolling machine to get her trained, because she needs to be trained and use it. She came with training, but she needed to know her, so just giving her the support, so we can have, she can run a great store. Stamen is obviously falls under engineering, robotics, search and rescue, AEP physics and American Sign Language is actually under the skill and technical science piece of that. Um, with Mr. Koozie, he, next slide, he has, I asked him for some pictures and he put some pictures together and he's got like three sets of pictures. But this is how awesome he is, not one of them talks about finishing second at nationals. That's, that's, that's what the outcome is, but you know, it's awesome, he did that, but he shows kids working on things. They did the homecoming results for, by the robotics team, drives the crown to the game, so that's a crown in that robotics. So, so really involved with the students at Rochester and so. No, but again, they're not a, I mean, he's very proud of finishing second last year, that's all great, I mean, and being a national champ a couple of years ago. But I just felt it was really cool that he put pictures of kids doing what they're doing now, because we're, you know, that's awesome, but we're, we're moving on, we're going to go get another one. So that probably gave a lot of, any question, that's a lot of talking, I should have brought a water.
I have one.
So um
in at my high school, not just from my high school I graduated from, but in Alabama, they have, it's a shipbuilding town, Mobile is a shipbuilding town. Okay, and there is um a couple of different places, but one of the places that I see online a lot, this place called Huntington Ingles. Some HII, but they're Huntington Ingles and they're shipbuilders, okay? And they have an apprenticeship program. And while I was searching for stuff one day, um they have something up here and then I lost it and I couldn't find it anymore.
I can re-Google that.
And um, and I don't remember how, how my search went, but the, but the point is, is I want to see something about that. I mean, these, these kids, when they, when they graduate that program, they can go into whatever fields that they have. And that is a good career opportunity.
And with, you know, Newmark is doing some things with the port, they've got, they're doing, um, is that marine? Marine diesel at the port, Mr. Ishler was able to get a program there, so they're starting some programs around, so that's a good.
Obviously, they wouldn't be able to stay here to do that.
Right.
But still, that's, that's a good opportunity and I actually emailed them and they never emailed back. So that was, you know, so, but that was my question for that.
Yeah, I think reaching out to the port and working with Mr. Ishler, because we're still close and just trying to find his contacts. Any other questions?
A couple uh, one question, one, I'm glad you brought up that machine, so I remember getting the machine. I thought the vision that was, maybe that's what you're saying, it's that eventually the kid might actually make some money, because then community groups and stuff coming in, if there's science made, stuff like that, is that still kind of the vision?
That's a, yeah, the end goal right now, just the overwhelming of getting, just getting a good product out there and getting the kids trained, because I can't, to have one teacher do that, it's going to be a.
So it's kind of followed on one teacher at this point?
Right, to do, because it's a, you know, it's entailed machine to use, so kids are learning how to use the machine. So still go, they did stuff for Sweet Day and they've done.
Oh, did they?
Signs for the car.
Yeah.
The parking gear sign.
It looks like they make a senior poster, I didn't realize. I, I would say the high school staff is keeping them busy, just for the stuff that they need. Just for the stuff that, yes. But I saw that thunder that they had, oh, right. And then the other is, I haven't been out there yet, to the, what was the farm, but I hear that the animal sciences thing or something may not be running this year or something. Is that true or do they still have all the critters out there and still doing that?
No, there's just a couple of critters out there, isn't there, Justin, just?
Maybe.
Just, yeah, just.
That's different than what it was, I mean, it was a big operation, are we still doing animal science?
No, it's not like that, I would do more to bio, ag bio and biology and.
I must have missed, why, why the change?
Just um interest in, in the class and the numbers of students to run a full class, over time, it wasn't produce enough students to make a piece of it.
So we don't have our own chickens to lay our eggs and cows?
Or pigs, or pigs to slaughter, I don't. That can be a, a good conversation for.
We would like to see that, but we have not had the kids registering for it.
So it's still on the books to run, it's just interest in getting that backup.
Was it this year that it stopped then or is it two years?
There was a class last year.
So it's been, so this numbers have been going.
Been going.
Yeah, for a few years.
Is there no? Sign or the ag animal, there's no?
Not to have, not.
Not this year, okay.
Yeah.
We're done? Do you not have anything?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Ed, you're up.
I can read my own writing. I thought I was going to give you this report by school, started RPS, just slowly up to the high school. Slide, next slide, there you go. So um, RPS, one of the main things we're doing right now is that picture on the right is our extern boiler. Um, we're in the process of going through that, we're going to do a full service on that. When I say we, we're having an elite mechanic will come in and do it, and then Justin Knutson, our new HVAC guy, is going to work closely with him, it's a great training process for him um to go through that. He's quite excited about going through that, because we have that second boiler at the middle school. Um, the boiler on the left is the backup boiler, so when we tear the extern down, that the blue boiler on the left will automatically kick in. That's the old style, but it has big cast plates and everything and it's still fully operational. The middle school has these exact identical boilers, the extern that they run on and then the, the blue cast iron plate boiler. But it is, the one at the middle school is the one that is failing, it'll run, but it leaks water, it leaks the coolant, the additive they'll put in the water. So I, I'll make this little elaborate on boilers for all the schools on this pitch right here is that the high school, we have one boiler, it's half the size of that ExoTherm. And I, I believe it is the original boiler from the school, when the school was installed. We're, we're a hundred percent on borrowed time on that boiler. Um, the elementary school is a one boiler setup school as well, so middle school and RPS are the only ones that have backup boilers. And of course, they're the newest schools that we have. Um, so we do have uh receiving quotes out for new boilers. We're in the process of, with the whole Clean Buildings Act, deciding whether we can go stay with gas or have to go electric with the Clean Buildings Act. So it's a bit of a challenge there, um switch over to electric is especially, it's more expensive. Anyway, so um that, that should be about a week process and then we could be back to the extern boiler, um so. Uh, the sports field, uh the picture on your right is a sports field at RPS, we're doing our due diligence to try to get that field into shape. When I say in shape, it looks good there in the picture, but you literally have to put a seatbelt on the mower to keep yourself in the saddle when you're mowing it, because it is so rough. So that's going to require getting rollers and putting soil and, and all that. And the reason we want to put, try to put as much effort in that, one, for the kids at the school, but two, we're, and so demand for sports fields, we're going to be needing to use that for something. For, you know, JV soccer, girl soccer, whatever it is, we, we need to utilize that space, we just don't have enough space for it. It's a challenge with our manpower and, and the resources that we have, but it's, it's a goal that we have set. The pictures on the left are the playground at RPS, which during the wintertime used to be what they called their little pond. Um, this here recently, we finished up the project, uh we completely went through the, the playground and put in a French drain style drain system that goes into the gutters, just goes into the dry well. That's just north of the playground, so no longer, we should have water ponds in there, so kids can play when it's a rainy day and not have to have three teachers out there to keep kids out of the pond. So it's just another one of the drainage projects we've worked on that everybody's excited to finally have done.
And it's working.
And it's working, yeah, and it's, it was all done in-house, so. Um, BMS, uh we have some siding replacement going on on portables. And then when I say going on, it's literally, they started, they called me this morning, says, Ed, we got a window, we can come out, so. You know, luckily, working with Kelsey and the teacher, they're fine with putting up a little bit of hammer and banging on the side of the portable. And it's actually all the old siding is stripped off and they're going to start re-sheathing tomorrow and everything. Um, we have a lot of portables that don't have this much damage, but they have some siding damage, not enough to get in there and replace it all yet. But enough, it, it's still solid enough that it's keeping the weather out, but it's just the nature of the portables with that, that siding, that is, it, it just isn't very durable. You know, it's just very life.
Damage behind it or just pretty much?
Yes, just that, that's the main weather side. And this is the side where, this location of this portable, 227, is where all the parent drop off and pickup come in, they come through, there's gates right there to the left of that picture on the left. There's double gates right there and that's where they all drive in, so. Um, they're, our parents will get a good dose of seeing what's happening, what we're doing to maintain our assets right now, so.
So is that, you have to do the whole building or just?
Just this end, just this entire end, and it also has an air conditioning unit on it, so we're working around that air conditioning unit, that panel box, all that stuff had to get removed, you know. Again, another one of those things, nice to have an in-house electrician like we do with David Deal, because we can do all that stuff, you know, you bring somebody else in and it's, you know, three hundred dollars more, so. RMS, um we have portable siding issues there, the picture's on the right, if you look up that first picture, you can see just all the nails are just popping right out. Now, the weather with the, the heat on the back of that building and it gets cold at night, it just sits there and expands and contracts and literally almost every sheet down the back of all three of those portables, the nails are coming out like that. So.
Need screws.
Yeah, well, yeah, we got to get in there and, you know. Res secure those, of course, you know, those holes ain't going to work, so we got to, you know, get in, do no do and call in, in pain, it's just, it's the never-ending process. We have some sheathing on the main building as well that is coming loose, they had some before I came, that was the same situation, they had to get up there and screw it in and we're getting some of that on that building as well. Same with the siding, if you, we're getting a building that's, you know, twenty plus years old, so. Yeah, next, oh, no, actually, the, the pictures on the left are uh a swing set that we're putting in for the sped department there. And that's a project that uh we're doing all the labor and everything on it, but uh the Shahela tribe is paying for all the materials and everything. So um that's going to consist of, it'll have footing in their playground, uh uh EWF, that engineered wood fiber, the same as the playground. And it'll have a swing set in there, that's all that's labeled to be in there right now, possibly in the future, there might be a picnic table around the corner or something, that teachers are excited about seeing what's going on, they just find advantages for that, so. You know, we're, we're just, we're just prepping for whatever might come down the road. That should have a fence around it and curbing, so it'll all blend into the lawn and it'll look like it's been there from original, so. Before I leave the middle school, um the walking track that's in, and everybody's been given, I have a picture of it, but people have been just given horrendous feedback about that track. Because before they were walking in the mud and the wet grass and I even had somebody approach me out here the other day, asking if they could use that track at the middle, go walk at the middle school on the weekends. I said, yeah, the doors, the gates open, just because they just like that, that track this way, so.
That's why you're getting feedback is middle.
Yeah, middle school people, I mean, they love the elementary school one too, but they've always had the gravel track, you know, since I came, but the, the, the middle school, that paved track is a big deal. They just, they like, teachers like it, students like it, people on the, I mean, I had somebody to pick up, stop me the other day, says. People on the, I mean, I had somebody to pick up, stop me the other day and says, hey, start talking about that track from, and on the weekend, by all means, you know, use it in after hours, you know.
Is the, the ground over the um, the field over at the primary school big enough to have a track around it?
It does have track around it. That was the first track that we put in.
Yeah, primary school?
Yep, yep. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, every, every school has a, every school has a um, paved track.
Yeah.
That was all done with grant funds.
Yeah, yeah. Except for with the high school that have a paved track, you know, we have the actual regular track and then, and then we have the cross, actually, that picture on the left is the high school. That is the actual cross-country track that we put that goes out throughout the eighty-plus acres. That it's roughed in pretty much, mostly has footing. This is one of the cleanest sections right there. But the cross-country is using it, and my hope is that soon Davina and her walking class will start using that. More people use it, the easier it is to maintain. Pictures on the right are, that's Gunner Morgan's uh, exercise project that's along the province uh, carpet trail. Makes little uh, chin up bars, hang from your knee bars, whatever it is that someone wants to do to stretch out when you're running and doing whatever. I've had a few people ask about it when it was under construction, but now it's completed.
Sorry, the gun. I think the middle picture has some dip bars in there.
Yeah, it's chin up bars, all, all kinds of.
Or if you're short, chin up bars.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. People who are vertically challenged.
Yeah, yeah.
Got a couple of questions. Is cross-country the practice here, but do they have a host in a meet?
Yeah, yeah, they actually have, they've actually, they've actually used that trail on cross-country, yeah.
Cool.
And actually, they're pretty excited about it.
And the other one, back to the primary uh, college, I was with it the other day and first of all, you guys do a great job, but those stenciled things that are on the playgrounds, on the cement or what, not the cement, but the pavement, where they have pictures and the kids play on it, so how often do you have to repaint those?
Well, I mean, it'd be great if we could repaint them every year, but we just don't have the manpower to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually had, when we, that's one of the things we typically have, when we hire that two high school students in the summer, that's one of the projects that we have them help with, but this year we had.
They're really cool. I think a man, it looks like.
Yeah, we had them involved in so many other things, and the kids love them. Especially the primary school, that big circle and all the numbers and little speed track and all that, yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to repaint them every year. We just didn't have the resources this year to do it.
So you, you could use it every year.
Oh, yeah.
You try to get there every two years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Always picking retired stick workers.
I know, I'm thinking, I'm gonna, I do it now though, trying to do it again next year. I, I, I'm actually a man short right now, because I, I had one that resigned, took another career opportunities.
Opportunity.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Gotta have thirty, fifteen in your retirement.
Yeah, yeah. No, it, it looks really good doing it. It makes everything look newer, you know, it's all painted up and everything, so. Yeah. Um, so RHS, um, I'll show these, this is the football field. This is, this is just how much use our field is getting. We, yeah, we, we look at this, we have one more football game to go on here, but we have a soccer game that goes on here tomorrow. And the picture on your left, all that mud strip you see right there? The soccer field line goes right down the middle of that. This is just how much use our sports fields are getting all the time. With the use that we're putting on them, this is just what happens to them. And like this right here, I have no way to correct this until the spring. It's only gonna be like this or get worse just because of the rain, because nothing's gonna grow. Nothing, there's nothing you can do to make that grow. And springtime's too close to when sports starts, so just about the time we get it lashed up, then everything's on it again. It's just the challenge that we face all the time with this. Our practice field this year has looked better than it ever has. I mean, it's, it's greener and getting more lush, but it's just, we just use our sports fields a lot. It's just, it's a huge challenge that we have.
So what are the plans gonna be, or maybe get some cut sod and put down?
We did, we did that last year. And we spent a couple thousand dollars on cut sod, but every place that you put that in, that union just doesn't, it doesn't wanna grow grass. You can grow the grass that you put in there, but the union just doesn't wanna, we still got, you can see where every piece of sod that we place is in that field. Just, it's just a challenge, you know?
What does the WIAA say about this type of environment? Does that mean we need to play games away from Rochester?
Well, if the, if the referees call it and say the field's too muddy, then we, that's exactly what we do. We play it in another school. We'll play football tonight or some other place that has a turf field.
Okay, and how many? We got one more football field?
We have one more football game. We have another soccer game tomorrow. One more home game, yeah. But then you're not talking, you know, get the P B football and soccer and all that stuff that goes on, it's just, it just really.
And we have the middle school field that we could also use, or you, that's what we've been working on as well?
But we don't have, we don't, we can't do any night games or anything like that, because we have the lights up. Same with the primary field that we're trying to get in shape. We don't have any lights there, so there's no nighttime.
With my JV games, afternoon games, weekend, day games. Yeah, because it looks rough. I, it was the last football game, it was raining sideways and all that on a Friday night. I'm like, oh, I need to go there, but I'm like, we're gonna run the ball.
Well, like this right now, I mean, one of the things we, we have, we have I, I bought a paint sprayer four, four or five years ago when I came here to do all of our own painting and stuff. We have a backup sprayer that we have. Unfortunately, Thursday's um, football, or Friday's football game, halfway through the day, the paint sprayer, our main paint sprayer gave up the ghost, so I don't wanna work anymore. So we grabbed the backup sprayer and it decided it didn't wanna work either, pumps all the paint out of the pump. So I NASCAR'd both of those to Tacoma, but we, we actually finished painting the football field with trays and rollers, numbers and hash marks and everything. That's how that football field will be painted. And depending on what they say when I call them first thing tomorrow morning, we will be painting the soccer field the same way. So for tomorrow's game. It's just, you know. Yeah, so some of those things we can get, you know, make a trip to Uline and get the upside down paint and the walk behind sprayer wand, but that's the way it has to be done with these fields. We painted the middle school, I don't know, three or four weeks ago and um, is when I was one man short and uh, Owen Pratt was there and I was there and we're painting it. This game started at four thirty and we were literally painting it at four twenty-five. And we're listening to all the parents from the other schools saying, I can't believe they have to mow this and paint this every time we do a game here, because they're also used to playing on for fields that are prepped elsewhere, you know? And they're like, I can't believe you paint this every time. You know, you can hear, not talking to us, you just hear them talking amongst themselves, you know, it's just like, this reality is what it is.
Something that used to be done in the nineteen hundreds?
I know. The problem is, we have so many, we have a lot of kids here. We have a lot of kids, a lot of activities, doing a lot of stuff. They're all doing it on the same grass. That's the problem.
Can we utilize this field here, or anything?
Yeah, this field is, it's so rough. Literally does, and somewhere literally occupies this to try to get off the other ones.
They come to.
And they come and maintain it and put dirt, and they've done all that, yeah. Just because all the other fields are used so much, you know? We, we are in the process, we have the JV fast pitch field that we put in by the maintenance field. We're actually starting on putting the putting the concrete forms down and trying to get the concrete poured before it freezes, so that we can work on building the um, dugouts, so they can have that. If they wanna play games there in the worst way next year, so.
I wish field?
The field that we put in by the maintenance shop, we put in a JV fast pitch field there by the maintenance shop.
Oh, yeah.
That's where I got puddings and bases and all that, and they practiced there all last year, but they want, you know, we gotta get the fence up in the dugout, so they don't have fly balls come at them and stuff like that, yes. That's just. So, let's see what else I have here. We are doing some scheduled maintenance on the water reservoir right now. That consists of exercising valves, sealing cracks, flushing lines and hydrants. We're right at the end of irrigation season, so shutting that water off is the time to, to go through these and exercise ourselves. Just help us stay ahead of making sure the valve is doing what they're supposed to be doing when we need them. HVAC, we lost a unit above the gym. Uh, we, we rebuilt that, and then shortly after we got that rebuilt, we lost another one of the units above the gym. It's still heating, but it's not air conditioning. And so we're just, we're running it the way that it is. It's doing the heating, we're just, we don't have all units going full blast on air conditioning, and we should be able to manage through this for a while.
Question, did we get any sort of stuff from uh, the COVID funding for the AC, the HVAC systems for upgrades? Not that I know of. No, I thought we.
I, I mean, we had S R funds and we could have put them towards updates on the HVAC system. I don't think any were used in the district for the HVAC upgrades. There might have been some filters.
I think there's some portable filter units and stuff like that that was used for, yeah.
For the portables, right?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of the HVAC, and a lot of that HVAC stuff was on the fence with COVID. Is, are you moving more areas good, or are you circulating more? You know, I mean, that was the dance that happened, just a lot of that. There was no precise, this is the best way to go, so.
What other, can we do those efforts were being made to upgrade, get better airflow?
Yeah, and, and like the, the um, the PEP thirteen filters and stuff like that, but then they found that those filters are so much more restricted. They filtered so much more, but then it puts so much more burden in wearing tear on your unit, so. Like I said, it's one half a dozen of the other, yeah.
We're replacing the whole unit assembly.
Okay.
Our, our systems were not as archaic as a lot of other districts, and therefore much of our issue was around programming. And, and making sure that computer says, but.
Yes.
Okay.
And then just another, since we've last met, um, the last school meeting, we replaced two more three-inch pipes that are irrigation system. It's just, it's just the balance. Every time we fix one, it, it puts more pressure in another spot and just makes that leak come down much more. So someday, I hope that we'll get on top of it and we will stop them all, you know?
You're gonna replace it all section.
At least at a time, literally, I mean, live at peace at a time, yeah, it's. Yeah, literally the guys fix the one in the baseball field and they're like, yes. The very next day, they go out to baseball field and the grass was mounted up about four feet high. It's like, no. That was, that was the second one, because whatever we did there made that one be, all the leak went there, you know, instead of it being in three, now it's down to one and just the, it's just the challenge. Questions?
Um, uh, the Rochester Middle School, the, the swing stuff, but the sped money, that was the cards we signed today for the Chehalis tribe, correct?
Yes.
We taking that donation? How did we get involved with that, or how, how, what aspect did we bring the Chehalis tribe in to help fund this, or how did that work?
It's actually a um, a Chehalis tribal student that we serve here, and he needed some additional uh, supports. And he has a swing that he uses, or he had a swing at Grand Mound that he used all the time as part of his um, therapy when, you know, um, and so now they really felt like having that same structure at the middle school would help them. And so that's what we're putting in, that's that's what we decided to put in there, and the Chehalis tribe said they would support that and pay for it.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Very wonderful, and, you know, it's important to have these connections with the local tribe. And, and this is a wonderful opportunity for, to show how this can work together.
Yep, and they were very willing to work with us and wanted to make it happen, so it was really nice, like you said.
Wonderful. It's thanks to our prep, we're just, we're waiting for the components to come in.
Nice, nice. Well, hopefully we can do some more collaborative efforts with them moving forward.
Goal.
Definitely. Much appreciated.
Anybody else?
Me.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Business?
All right, so Jill is out ill this evening. Um, yep, uh, but you did see she's got her kids working for her, so that's what. But Justin, if you can click that.
Yep.
Why there? Thank you. So just, um, we only have an enrollment summary tonight. Jill is working on, on the uh, year-end budget. Um, we've had some challenges with our new Q system, so we don't have any of that data for you right now. You will have an update um, at the March meeting. At least that's what we're hoping it all works for by then. Um, and not March, sorry, November, yeah, by March, you'll know it all. In November, November sixth. Uh, this is our student enrollment report and.
Grass and green.
I'm just gonna fast forward the clock. Uh, student enrollment, you can see uh, where we are, twenty-six sixty-two um, is our FTE, so that's a two thousand sixty-two student FTEs per head count, we're two thousand one hundred and eighteen for October. The two thousand sixty-two is um, twenty-three students above where we were last year at this time. So we are seeing more students. It's also important to note here that we're almost twenty, nineteen point eight nine students above what we budgeted to be at. So we did budget conservatively. We definitely want to see, we definitely, we don't wanna come in under our budget, so we're where we need to be there. Um, you can see our running start student enrollment there. It's about the same as it was last year. Um, and then you see heart students, which Kevin shared that data with you. Um, and then you can see the sped, sped report. And our special education numbers are a little bit higher than they were last year, and you can see they're a little bit higher in October than they were in September. Part of that is because as we get new students into our system, we end up qualifying more students as we see the needs. And then gravity is uh, the E S D program that we have some students at. And I think we had five for the most part last year, and right now we have six at gravity. So the next slide, there is the graph, and you can see where we are um, relative to other years, and we are a little bit higher than we have been for the past three years. Yes, for the past three years. And like I said, we are uh, twenty-three students above twenty-three FTE above where we were last year. We are only twelve students above, so our FTE is uh, there's much, a lot more difference between our FTE last year at this time and they compared to the FTE last October, but our student head count is actually only twelve students difference. Regardless, we're higher than we were, continue to grow. All right, and then my report for you, just have a few things.
Okay.
Uh, real quick on the enrollment, I'm just noticing a couple of things.
Uh huh.
Kindergarten.
Small.
Small.
Yeah. Um, we're not, we're not sure why.
Not sure why, yeah.
Yeah, we don't know why. Um, we did add a teacher finally, be, because we had the funding from the um, class size reduction for K three class size reduction, so we did have the money to do it, but our kindergarten is smaller than it has been for, for previous years.
I'm just thinking planning, why you get that class at that size and you got the one ninety-one or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah.
A lot of shifting of personnel on that.
A lot of shifting of personnel, a lot of changing, you know, as we move through the system. And is that an indicator of what's to come, right? Is that the beginning of a new trend, or is that just an outlier? And it's so hard to know with kindergarten. And Maggie, right now, we're not seeing any increase in our partners in the enrollment to daycares?
No, no. They, they are, um, they're full, which is an indication that we always like them full. That means that they're gonna hopefully come to us. Uh, that's a little bit deceiving because Roots is going through that transition. So uh, so that's, that's gonna be a question mark in a couple of months, but early learning is looking typical, so that, you know, with the, you know, I think we're gonna go down below a hundred. I, I think it's COVID personally, yeah, that's what I think, but so I think in a few years.
Five-year-olds.
Yeah, we'll be back up.
Well, the first group hundred fifty, so I mean.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, well, I was trying to. How, when would these kids have been born? Twenty twenty? Uh, maybe it's not twenty-two.
Right before.
Okay, nevermind.
All right. Any other questions?
No question. All right, new business.
Actually, we had a few slides for me. I'll go really fast, how's that?
Oh, I thought you.
I have just a few things.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were.
I know, I wasn't that fast, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm like, oh.
So we did just get done with conferences. Um, we did our success conferences in August, and then this is the first conference where teachers sat down and really had conversation with our uh, families about how kids were doing academically. Uh, you can see really good, good attendance at RPS and GMS, RMS as well. Those numbers at RPS, GMS and RMS actually mirror within a percentage points, the, the attendance we had last year at those. The high school is lower. Um, and one of the things there, they did try a different system for this fall. Um, there was a lot of, I think good things that they were trying to put into place there. They did an arena conferencing, um, allowing parents to come in and talk to any teacher that they wanted to, rather than just their um, CSR teacher, which uh, sometimes parents get a little frustrated going in and talking to the CSR teacher when they wanna talk to the math teacher, they wanna talk to the English teacher. But uh, I don't think we did a really good job of sending out the message that that option was there, and that you could come in and talk to any teacher, and that you not could, but really should come in and talk to your teachers. So that option was there, and then the teachers also called and made um, appointments with the students in their classrooms that are really struggling already. And they did get a large percentage of those kids in, um, the kids that are struggling already in school. And they did get a large percentage of those kids in, um, the kids that are struggling already in school, either attendance wise or academically, or just needing, you know, that the parents that teachers felt like they needed to sit down with and have that conversation. They did special outreach to those parents, and they did get those, those parents in, and that some of them had um, conferences with the, with a student, and maybe there was two or three teachers there to talk with the parent and kind of work as a team. So I think that part of it was good, but we still have some more work to do at high school to increase our participation of our parents with the kids in conferences. Uh, next up. Uh, you've heard from the kids, I probably can't say it any better than them, especially referencing, you know, when the last time was that keep on saying no and the whole bit, when he said that to me this afternoon, I just cracked up. Um, but they are very excited about their win against Montesano, and they should be. And they are also very excited because if they do do win, um, well, I was corrected today, I thought it was the next two games that they would actually be league champs, but, um, Tristan told me today that if they win the next game, they're, they're league champs. Yeah, they're tied with Montesano at that point, so, um, so it's a, it's a good season for football, and it's been a long time since they've been in that, um, situation. I think overall, what we're seeing is that our teams are more competitive this year, which is not a big surprise. But they're having better games, um, soccer, you know, doesn't have a real good winning record, but yet their games have been really good games, really competitive games. Our volleyball team, which used to go to a game last year, and as Justin and I were talking earlier, you know, the game used to be over in half hour, forty minutes and it was done. This year, they're going four games, and they're actually winning some of them, and they're playing right up to that, uh, the winning point, and, and, you know, having some real good competitions. Um, the golf team, you heard about the kids, uh, being at district, but the, the golf team is doing a really good job, and they had, they were third in the league when you looked at the number of wins that they have. So we've got a lot of kids that are out having a good season, and, um, Kevin York will be here in November to tell you more specifics about that. Gear Up Grant, I, we talked about this in September, um, but I just wanted to mention again, really just that first bullet. When we talked in September, we thought we were getting one staff person. Um, we have since done a lot more conver- conversing with, um, the people who are leading the grant, and we actually are going to have four staff people as a part of the grant. So those positions are gonna be posted really soon. Um, two people who will be, uh, considered gear up advisors, and they will be really leading the program. And then we'll have, uh, two, uh, people, uh, kind of classified staff to help support the program with the kids. And again, this is a program that we're really gonna be working with students in grade seven through thirteen to help them identify what are their career goals, what do they wanna do after high school? And then the really nice piece about this is, it says grade seven through thirteen, because they will follow the students after they graduate. If they said that they were gonna go and be an apprentice, then they're gonna be following those students to make sure they get an apprentice programs. Or if they were gonna go to a tech school, they're gonna follow them. If they were transitioning into Centralia, they're gonna be following students, especially those that they've identified that are gonna need the support along the way. But this program will take kids, um, to different places to have, uh, field trips and overnight trips, to visit colleges, to visit different, um, career options. It'll, it's a, program is really gonna focus on helping our kids figure out the why behind what they're doing every day in school. So it's an exciting piece, and I just, I'm thrilled that we're gonna get four staff fully paid for out of that.
It's a seven-year grant cycle.
Seven-year grant. Yep, it's a thirty-eight million dollar grant, and I think there's eight schools, districts.
Right, so.
Yeah, so, um, yeah. Uh, this is National Principals, School Principals Month. I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. Um, Andrea has a fabulous Facebook post that's going out soon, that's going to highlight our principals and some of their, um, likes and loves and what they like to do with, in life outside of being at school, and there's some really fun things that we're gonna be able to learn about them. But our principals, they really do make a difference within our buildings, they create that culture. They're the why behind, you know, our teachers and our students thriving, um, they're working to bring the communities, and they, they work really hard um, every single day. So we just wanna make sure that you're aware that we're celebrating them, and if you wanna send them a note or say thank you, this would be a great time to do it. Veterans Day assemblies, so they're all coming up. I can put this in an email to you as well. But November seventh at seven forty in the morning, that's at the middle school. Uh, November seventh, the high school will be doing something, uh, at that time, they're still finalizing it, they're looking at a few different things, so I will let you know when the high school lands. Grand Mound is doing it on November seventh at two fifteen, and then R P S on the eighth at nine oh five, and if you wanna see it, great. I mean, they're all really good, but there's nothing better than watching the, the littles sing to our veterans, so. It is, yeah. It's a, it's a really special, heartwarming, uh, assembly, so. But all of them are good, and the high school is talking about inviting veterans in to do breakfast in the li- in the library with students, and then to possibly do, um, a, kind of a hero's parade through the, through the high school, like they do for their state athletes, and then possibly do an assembly after that to do some, uh, education for the kids. But, so more to come on that one. And then finally, our upcoming events, if you're interested in the haunted bus, I, it's on October twenty-fifth, and that happens over at the bus garage. And I wanna give a shout out to First Student because they've been doing this, I know, at least three years now, and they really go all out. If you wanna just go walk around and see some cool buses and bus drivers with their buses, um, you know, all decked out for Halloween, it's, it's a fun evening, so six o'clock on the twenty-fifth. Trunk or treat at R P S on the twenty-sixth, we've got a board meeting on the sixth. There's a family game night at R P S on the thirteenth, that's also the same night as our strategic plan night, so Suzie, you can't be there, sorry. Was the conferences on the twenty-first, and then Thanksgiving bizarre at the middle school is on the twenty-third, if you can believe that, so uh, that's Saturday the twenty-third, and then we have another board meeting on the eleventh. That's what I've got.
So there's no November board business meeting on the. Fourth Wednesday.
Correct, just on.
That's standard.
Yep, you're right.
Always the day before Thanksgiving.
Yep. All right, you ready?
Uh, okay, new business. New career and technical education plan.
This is approving, uh, the career and technical education plan, which we have to approve every year. And it basically is what Kevin presented to you tonight.
Oh, okay, all right, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
The move.
Can I get a second?
A second.
We wanna discuss anything? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion has passed. All right, this is the overnight out of state travel.
Yep, this, but when you approve this, then it allows us, when we have students who, um, make state and have to travel the next week to go and compete, rather than us having to come back to the board and say, can they travel overnight? This gives us the ability that when the kids, um, do have a competition or a national event like, uh, our robotics team going across the state, we can get things going and, and buy plane tickets and things quickly, um, rather than having to wait for a board meeting to approve it.
Okay.
We'll do the question after.
Yep, do I have a motion to approve? So move. Can I get a second?
A second.
Second, discussion.
When would something come then? If this is, I understand state's happening after district, so not Friday, and I have to make reservations Monday, but what? Then it's just like when teachers wanna go out of state for some, uh, training or something, that would come to the board?
Yes, or a, um, camp, yeah, basketball camp, we've done, um, yeah, there, there are events, this is something that's been done.
Yeah.
Every year, yes, this is the, oh my gosh, they made state, we need to move.
We're not gonna stop.
Right, but we want the, we want the others to plan when they're going out of state and give us at least a month's notice, and that way, yes.
All right, uh, resolution, resolution. Oh, excuse me, oh, I'm. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed? The motion has passed. Okay, now can we go to the next?
You can.
Since I'm skipping a lot tonight here. All right, resolutions for surplus office, oh, okay, I remember this, the office space, the old gym, cafeteria, the room we rented out to the, uh, no, the. Boys and girls club and the.
Oh, that will be Lucy.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, do you have a motion to approve?
The move.
Uh, can I get a second?
I'll second.
And discussion? Any questions about? Nope. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? And so the motion's passed. Okay, public comment, nobody's outside, nobody's online?
Well, there's someone online, I'm almost guaranteeing she does not want to. Saying no, I see her head, she's saying no.
Oh, yeah, no chicken?
No, 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 okay, she's fine.
No, I'm, I'm here as like a, you know, future admin.
Thanks, Nancy. Oh, she's getting ready for hours.
Okay, uh, if there was no comments, the board of the jurn. I, twenty twelve.